Good morning, everyone. It's 7:00 AM, March 13th, 2019. We'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee of the whole to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Thompson.
Yeah.
I guess it is.
Here.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. First item of business on the agenda this morning is Neighborhood Impact Program, and we have some representatives from Gate City Bank, and I will call on them at this time. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Members, Mayor Shire, members of the city, council members of the city, thank you for allowing us the time today here. My name is Tyler Worth. I'm the retail manager of the Fergus Falls branch here. With me I have Lynette Gostad. She's our sales and service supervisor. And I also have with me Josh Rachels. He is our personal loan officer. And we have some other members of the bank with us as well. A cornerstone of Gate City Bank's mission is to serve our customers and connect with our communities while providing a better way of life. Today, I would like to speak about how the Neighborhood Impact Program offered by Gate City does just that. The Neighborhood Impact Program is a series of programs designed to work together to improve neighborhood quality of life and encourage investment in the city's existing neighborhoods. Gate City's investment in the program has made a significant impact in the city's effort to maintain its affordable housing stock, in addition to stabilizing neighborhoods. The city of Fergus Falls Neighborhood Impact Program has established for the city of Fergus Falls homeowners to encourage the preservation of homes and to add to the long-term value and life of their property and neighborhood. We are thankful for this opportunity to help build a better way of life for our friends and neighbors residing in Fergus Falls. Since 2017, Gate City Bank has made $2 million available in low-interest rate loans, helping 15 homeowners to make home improvements while saving borrowers nearly $50,000 in interest. This year, we're excited to have the opportunity to provide an additional $1 million to the city of Fergus Falls Neighborhood Impact Program to continue the revitalization initiative in the Fergus Falls community. We have a handout that we gave to everybody, and I understand you have an electronic version as well. The details of this program are included in the handout. And please note that the deadline for this application is October 31st. Again, I want to thank you all for having us today. And at this time, if there are any questions, we would like to open the floor to that.
Anyone on the council have any questions?
I suppose do people contact you direct, or do they contact City Hall?
They will contact City Hall.
Right.
Yep, to get the application process started.
Absolutely. In between now and October 31st, you said?
Correct.
Okay. Wonderful. If there's not any other questions, I'm gonna go grab that check for...
Wonderful. So we'd love to snap a quick photo or two. That would be... Yeah.
He grabbed it right up. Don't give it back.
Absolutely. Did you want to move that chair?
All right.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. We're gonna put this up.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
I'm ready to grab the chair. Put it in Jim's chair. Put it on Jim's chair. Like the Million Dollar Man.
All right. Next item on the agenda is RTC Special Appropriation, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Good morning, members. Before you this morning is a resolution related to the Phase II deconstruction state bonding dollars that we received in the 2018 legislative session. As you recall, we received $3.5 million, which is what we were requesting of the state. I provided the exact language that was approved by the state in the packet. And what I'm asking for today is an approved resolution that essentially allows us to enter into the agreements and accept the Phase II appropriation. Deed, the Department of Employment and Economic Development, is overseeing these funds. It was that part of the bonding bill, and they have a specific application process we have to fill out. And this resolution is from them and is part of that application process. Once we get this resolution approved, we have just a few final touches to put on that, and then we will submit that to Deed for their review and ultimate approval.
Thank you, Andrew. Is there any... Are there any questions in the council? If not, is there a motion to move that to the...
Make that motion, your honor.
I'll second it.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posting, sign that motion.
No. I'm voting no.
Voting no. But thank you. The motion carries.
Does a...
Sorry, Scott. I didn't mean to touch on...
No, there wasn't an opportunity for discussion, really.
Sure.
And if I understand it, we need five votes?
On a resolution, we need five votes.
Okay.
And if there are any comments, I probably didn't give enough... Do you have any comments that you wanted to make?
Well, we're gonna be talking on the next point further, so I can make my point there.
Sounds good. We'll go on to that next item. It's Phase II demolition bids, and I'll call on Brian Uvaro.
Yes, thank you, your honor, and good morning, members. Before you is in regards to public improvement, 9692. I have a little edit in the subject line. This is Phase II building demolition on the RTC campus. StanTech has substantially completed the project plans and specifications. Currently, this Phase II, if you recall, consists of building... I'm gonna just scroll the screen here and just show you if you can all see my cursor. Building 3225-3, building 30's remaining foundation, and the electrical substation that I'm circling in this area right now. A few other things I'd like to note right now with this project is number one, with the electrical substation that's located here, primarily the corridor that distributes to the entire campus did go through the tunnels and also served to go through these interior buildings here as well. So because of this, we're installing a new feed point generally located here where my cursor is. This is the transformer for the streetlights currently serve the campus. We're going to install a new feed and a 200-amp service to Building 1 that we can adequately serve the current power facility needs for that facility. We're also gonna do some interdocks for future development as well. So that was one obstacle. By doing this Route 2 as well, this will minimize the power disruption to this buildings. We could actually, once we... If we get an awarded contract with good bids, we could actually start doing this power service right now and really minimize the interruption to building... Power to Building 1. Also want to note, if we scroll on a few other bid documents, restoration. A majority of the area is proposed to be reinstalled with turf. However, with exception, primarily on the backside of Building 1 and 22 and 26, we're gonna do restore with bituminous pavement. This is for accessibility and also to provide positive drainage from the foundation. I also want to note the access point. We're doing a temporary access that was very similar to Building 1. It's just a temporary stairway going up there. We're gonna have one access point here to, number one, to minimize access, but also to provide it to as well for the campus. And I also have in here, too, just an illustration of what it is. It's very a wooden stair step and everything, very basic minimal needs and everything. So at this time, we complete the plans. We estimate the probable construction costs of roughly $2.7 million. Therefore, we must publicly advertise for bids. We haven't officially set the bid date. This is primarily attributed to you because SHIPOL has not officially consented to the city's mitigation proposal. However, we anticipate this occurring here very soon. Once this occurs, we're gonna start the process of the advertisement. We estimate that this, with our current schedule and tender of SHIPOL, we could begin as early as June 2019 with the actual deconstruction. We anticipate a substantial completion of September 2019. Final completion would more than likely be early the following summer. We estimate, once again, that this would be funded through the $3.5 million grant administered through Deed that Andrew, Mr. Brumseth had just spoke of. So at this time, I'm requesting, except the plans and specifications for Phase 2, and I'm also looking for authorization to advertise for Phase 2 of public improvement, 9692.
Thank you, Brian. What... Just one quick question. What was the approval from SHIPOL that we were waiting on? I didn't mention, I didn't catch that.
We're working on... Mr. Brumseth and I have been working on, in the running, with the planner, mitigation proposal.
Just to... Okay. Just finalizing that agreement that we made with SHIPOL.
Yeah, your honor. Members, we've had a lot of back and forth and have been consulting with them on that, and we submitted what we feel is the final draft of that at the beginning of last week.
Sure.
They had said they would expedite response, so we're envisioning that we get that any day now, and then that would be the final approval to move this thing forward.
Sounds good. We'll have discussion. Let's get a... We'll get a motion on the floor.
I'll make the motion.
Recommend this to the council?
I'll second it.
Motion, say it. All right, discussions.
Scott. This probably is appropriate for both the last point and this one here.
Sure.
To the degree that these resolutions will, in effect, move the ball forward on demolition activities up the RTC, I can't support it. And so I'll be voting no on this resolution as well. Last... Yesterday, as it turns out, I was down in southern Minnesota. I had some work to do in a small town that was kind of off the beaten path. And I got to a point where it wasn't familiar for me. I had to stop, take a look, realize I was headed for Iowa. I was not headed for where I was supposed to be. Like the father who's on vacation with the family that's headed for Yellowstone Park and finds himself in Chicago, that's where I see this going. We've got a city that is determined to demolish something without even having a plan in place for it. And we've talked about and have made plans for making a plan. We ought to make the plan first, and then we can move ahead with this kind of thing. Not to say that some of this won't happen, maybe all of this will happen. But now is not the time to do it. It's poor stewardship, it's wrong-headed, and I cannot support it.
Thank you, Scott. Any other comments?
I mean, obviously, I appreciate and understand, obviously, your position, Councilmember Kwame, but obviously, we've been dealing with this for a long time. And, you know, I think we've taken a phased approach in reducing and mitigating risk to the residents of Fergus Falls. And, you know, the goal of this is to get it down to a more manageable, you know, portion of the curb ride and the most significant pieces of the curb ride. And I think that's what this plan is doing. It both... It meets, you know, reducing the risk for the residents, and, you know, it's using, obviously, dollars from the state, and it brings it down to a manageable piece. And I think that's why I will support it all the way.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other discussion? If now we have a motion to move this recommendation to the full council on Monday night, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Item number four is a Glacial Edge Trail Master Plan Amendment, and I will call on Nick Leonard, Ottertail County. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Nick Leonard with Ottertail County. I'm here this morning just to... Several months ago, Ottertail County had a meeting with Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Council staff, and specifically, the conversation was around regional designations, trails of significance. And we've had other trail... Other areas asking for trail to become regionally significant. Currently, there are two trails that have that designation. It is the Purim to Pelican Rapids Regional Trail and the Glacial Edge Trail here in Fergus Falls, of course. And in that meeting, Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails inquired whether we would consider talking to the city of Fergus Falls about an amendment to the Glacial Edge Trail to include not only the components that are within the city, but actually the extension that would go all the way to Maplewood State Park. And so I think all of you have a copy of this. Ignore the letterhead on the back. That was my ineptitude as it's related to a large multi-function printer this morning. But if you notice, there's two significant green lines. One goes from the city of Pelican Rapids over to Purim. That is the Purim to Pelican Rapids Regional Trail that currently has Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails designation as regionally significant. We are actively pursuing... In fact, it's broken into four segments, that trail, starting from the west. And it's not designated here, but basically, it's a four-segment, west, Silent Lake, McDonald at east. We're beginning construction on the east end of that this year. We have bonding in currently for the Silent Lake and McDonald section. And in fact, we're at... We were testifying yesterday as it pertains to that, and one of the questions was, well, how will this tie into the Central Lakes Trail? And so the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails request is that north and south line, essentially the green line that would take us from Fergus Falls all the way to Maplewood State Park. And so their question to us is, rather than apply for regional significance on its own, would you consider working with the city to do an amendment to the existing Glacial Edge Trail to make that a single-trail system? Certainly, from a county standpoint, that... We believe that's worth conversation. Their desire is to, of course, have, in order to be regionally significant, there can't be dozens of them in a county, so they're trying to identify what trails really are the priorities. And for us at the county, you can see via our master trail plan, these are the two priority trail segments. And so the... In conversations with Mr. Miller and Mr. Brumseth, the request really is, can we move ahead getting a proposal on what it would cost to do the amendment and do the process? Financially, my expectation, and I won't speak for the commissioners, but the county would be doing a master plan regardless, whether it's an amendment or whether it's a brand-new master trail plan. And so my expectation, and I suspect the commissioners would agree, that it is... Will be the responsibility of the county to... The counties will burden the cost of that project. With that, I'll take questions.
Sure. Nick, question from... How would the... How would this affect the funding for the city? I mean, obviously, there's only limited funds, and it's a... Would you envision this all being done as one, or is it all in multiple years?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the... In visiting with Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails, so depending on the funding source, they assured us that, you know, the city would continue to have the responsibility for the construction and maintenance, and ultimately, we'd have to have some type of delegation agreement. But the city would have responsibility for the construction and maintenance of the city portion. County would have responsibility for construction. I think it would... And they assured us that we could, in fact, apply for, if we were both... If we were applying for a section on the county portion and the city was applying for a section, we could submit two grants theoretically. I think it's in the best interest of the county and the city to work together to make sure we identify what are the priorities, how do we move from south to north to get the trail constructed. But there are many funding sources, as you know, and personally, I believe this increases the ability of both the city and the county to be in a better position to apply for this and other funding such as LCCMR.
Sure.
Your honor, let me add to that, too, if you don't mind. That's consistent with what we're hearing as well from Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails. I know Ryan Miller was in contact with them within the last couple of weeks, and the message that they're telling us is, by working with the county, the scoring for both the county and the city's applications would be higher, thus more competitive, and would have a likelier chance of being funded. In talking to Nick, I think there's certainly an appetite on both ends to work collaboratively and identify which sections should be funded first, which sections could wait, and how this all comes together. And I have no issues... Or I don't anticipate any issues working with the county on laying out a plan for which segments of these two trails should be considered first for funding.
Sure. Well, I think it would be... I fully support the trail to Maplewood. You did say south to north, correct?
Mr. Mayor, did I say south to north?
Any other questions for Nick?
Just... What's the overall timeline on the, you know, the Pelican, Purim, in terms of... Obviously, you're saying it's four sections, you're starting on section, you know, an easterly section now, or hopefully with... If you get funded.
Your honor, Councilman Hicks, the process currently, just to give you an update, the west... The east section is being constructed. It'll be done by 2020. We are in the process of bonding, as I mentioned, a $4.7 million for... Maybe it's... It's all rough math at this point. But bond request for the Silent Lake and McDonald. If that were funded this year, it would be, you know, we've got probably about 18 months of engineering and acquisition, and then construction immediately after. So that's probably a three-year period.
Right.
If, in the event that we don't receive... Regardless of whether or not we receive funding via the state, the Board of Commissioners two weeks ago directed staff to begin engineering and acquisition on those portions. So in the event that we don't receive bonding, we'll be in a better position next year, too. The west segment from Pelican Lake, from Pelican Rapids to Maplewood State Park, we currently have a LCCMR grant in for the entirety of that. So with luck, within three years, but that's everything falling in place.
Thank you.
So we're just discussing the action necessary. I think it would be appropriate for the council to have a motion to the full council authorizing the... Going off the quotes on what this would cost, and then discussing the cost burden. Have that discussion on Monday night. Is that...
Yeah. If Monday night, you could authorize us to get quotes from a few firms related to what this amendment would cost, it should be relatively inexpensive in the scheme of things. The bulk of the master plan work has been done. There will be, of course, a little bit of public participation process involved in an amendment like this. But if Ryan Miller and Nick can work collaboratively to secure those costs, ultimately, I suppose, if the county's taking on the cost, it would be a matter of them approving any contract. But if the council's comfortable with us moving down this road to amend, the motion would direct us to do that.
Scott?
Just a question. The Glacial Edge Trail Master Plan as a document or as a project was put together by the city or by the county or by some other... Who put that plan together? Where'd that plan originate?
It was a city document.
So the city's done that? Okay.
And this would just include the portions in that? It's... And that's been granted regional designation. And that's... There's only so many regional designations that the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails will recognize, I guess. And so this is just combining the county's trails with that into one bigger regional designation.
And then, your honor, members, I should mention, too, once that amendment's completed, those get submitted back to Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails for their approval and then for them to deem the trail or the new trail regionally significant. And adding this portion of the county trail makes that argument much stronger that there is regional significance, so I don't envision that would be a problem.
Is there a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Caroline.
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, rummage sale signs discussion, and I will call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, your honor, thank you. I'll start, and then if Guy wants to add anything, that would be great. But I just wanted to start a discussion with the council this morning regarding our enforcement of rummage sale signs as we're nearing our warm months here. I will mention that this is probably the number-one thing that generates calls during the summer months related to people's signs getting pulled by the city or disappearing. And quite honestly, we spend a lot of limited staff time trying to fight a losing battle. The other concern to me is the PR mess that this has caused over the last few years with people saying, doesn't the city have anything better to worry about or do? And I would argue that we do, in fact, have better things to do and worry about than running around pulling garage sale signs out of the right of way. So wanted to start a discussion this morning as to whether or not there's an appetite for the council to lax enforcement. The discussions with previous councils on this matter, the council wanted staff to continue to remove any signs they found within the right of way as soon as they found them. I am fine with that, if that's the direction of the council, but I'm giving you the information today that we spend a lot of staff time doing this, and it's created a lot of bad feelings and frustration amongst people in the community who only do one or two garage sales a year and have ultimately been responsible and come back and picked up their signs. You know, the biggest concern from my point of view is signs that are too close to the roadway and would prohibit sightlines and act as a barrier to safe travel on the roads. And those things obviously need to be addressed, but generally, we haven't had a whole lot of issues or complaints, and if they're in private property, those property owners certainly can remove them if they're not allowed to be there, or they can contact, you know, the appropriate person to do that. I don't have much more to add, other than I want to generate a discussion and hopefully get your guys' thoughts on this, but Guy, I don't know if you have anything from a staffing point of view, if you want to piggyback on that.
I think you summarized it pretty well. I was just gonna emphasize the point of the staff time that's involved and what it takes away each week. It's Monday morning, they'll go around, pick up what was left over the weekend, and Friday, they're looking for signs specifically a couple of times a day, and then it's the staff time to pick them, deal with the person having the sale when they come to retrieve their sign. And so, yeah, a lot of staff time involved.
Yeah, I guess I would just say that I've always agreed... Outside of the safety concern, if there is a safety concern, obviously, we need to address that and take that... We do have, in my opinion, much greater things to worry about, and I think the PR nightmare that it produces is definitely not worth the headache. Anthony?
I think I would agree, but I think that if we have an ordinance, then we're duty-bound to adhere to the ordinance. So I think that we need to review the ordinance and, as you say, you know, amend it so that, you know, we don't have an obligation to go and pick the signs up if people put them there. So I think it would justify a review of the ordinance and change this to allow, you know, some more flexibility. As you say, I think, you know, if you sort of, you know, put language in there that, you know, people can put signs, but they can't put them in, you know, they've got to consider the safety factor, and then, you know, ultimately, probably, they've got to pick them up, you know, by so many hours after their sale is completed.
Do we... Question on that? That's a good point. I think you're absolutely right. We can bring that ordinance. Do we have a state law that says you can't have a sign in the right of way? Are we going up against a state law? And how does that work as far as enforcing or not enforcing? Do we have the ability to not enforce a state law?
I don't know if our ordinance can supersede that or not.
They can't. No, there is a state statute, but I would argue that very few communities are doing this, and these things do pop up in the right of way. We encourage... You know, obviously, the best-case scenario is you ask somebody that lives on a high-visibility corner if they can put it on their private property, and it's on that side of the right-of-way line. We know these things are gonna happen.
Sure.
But they're not being enforced to the level of what Fergus Falls is doing in any other community around us, and that's why it's generating the PR mess that we see in the summertime. There's some things that we may have to overlook, and certainly, we don't want things there for long periods of time. We don't want cardboard boxes sitting out in the rain, ripping apart and blowing around town, but you know, we also want to be reasonable and worry about things that are actually top of mind and priority. Kyle, I don't know if you have any...
Yeah. I was just gonna say, when it comes to enforcement of anything, I think that maybe the best way to put it is, you have to give maybe people a reasonable amount of time to remove something that's not placed appropriately, and I would think by Monday morning, if something isn't placed appropriately, then that's maybe the time to take some type of enforcement action, but...
Sure.
I think that there's some discretion that can go into how we address the issue, so...
Sure. Thank you. I think we also could address it in our ordinance, so it's not a top priority in our ordinance. I mean, we can't do anything about the state statute. We can do... We can control it within our own ordinance.
Yeah. Before I got elected, I sat out there, and I don't know how many times this issue came up, and I just could not believe the amount of time and effort... of enforcement action, but...
Sure.
I think that there's some discretion that can go into how we address the issue.
Sure, thank you. I think we also could address it in our ordinance, so it's not a top priority in our ordinance. I mean, we can't do anything about the state statute, we can do, we can control it within our own ordinance.
Yeah, before I got elected, I sat out there, and I don't know how many times this issue came up, and I just could not believe the amount of time and effort and the million different ideas that came up here. Well, let's put signs in the parks and tell people where to go and everything else, and it's just like, we just got to give it a rest. Unless people are putting them on signposts, or putting them on trees, or putting them on light posts, as long as they're not a big sign, I don't even care that they're that close to the road, because the biggest factor that I have with all of this is safety. In my front yard alone, I've had two major accidents because people put a cardboard box on the sign with marker writing on it. The only thing that I would like to see done is a stipulation of the signs you can put up. Blow 99 cents on a sign with a big yellow or red thing pointing in the direction, because people are going to go down the road, they're going to see that, they're not even going to look for an address, they're going to say, oh, I got to turn here. Safety is the only concern that I have. I mean, the cardboard box signs and everything else where you can't read them, where people are slowing down, blocking traffic and everything else, as far as everything else, give it a rest. I mean, I've heard so many people say that when it comes to, they're halfway between Fergus and somewhere else, they don't want to come here because of the amount of hassles that Fergus does. Their garage sale signs. People come to town all summer long for garage sales, they buy gas, they buy food, they get groceries while they're here, and the point is, is it's what draws people to the town. I think when it comes to, even if it's a little closer to the right of way, I don't care, as long as it's clearly visible for somebody to see, and it's not, I mean, you'd have to be pretty high up in order to block a sightline from a car. I mean, if it's down low and people can see it easily, and they can come down the road and say, oh crap, take a left here, let's go, that's all I'm worried about. And if they're not, and the only thing, make them use regular signs, put their name and address on the back of the signs, come Monday if the signs are still there, send somebody around to pick them up, put them a bill on their utility bill for not picking their signs up. That way, you're only hitting the people who leave their signs out. And just make it easy, let people come to town, let them go garage selling. That brings in a lot of people spending a lot of money, and there's, we got hit by the newspapers with a lot of bad press on this, and it needs to stop.
Thanks, Brian. I think we know where you stand on this one.
Oh, it's, it rubbed me wrong, I don't have garage sales.
I agree with you, Brent, I always have. Any other, we should just let it, give it a rest on that, on Brent's last word there, right? Could we bring it to, can we bring this ordinance to the council with some suggested, on the local ordinance, ways we could...
Your Honor, I guess I would just ask that maybe you refer it back to staff for a little bit, and just maybe let us, yeah, and maybe one summer or two of just letting things work out might even give us a little better clarity of what we need to change in that ordinance.
You got the direction, you kind of know where the council stands, and staff can take it from here. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, rental registration discussion, and I will call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, Your Honor, members, similarly to the previous item, wanted to generate a discussion on this as well. I've had several council members come up to me individually and have a desire to have this conversation. At our recent retreat, this was one that we put in a parking lot, so to speak, to bring up at a certain, or a future date, and here we are, and I don't have anything to add, other than I know several of you feel strongly about this ordinance and the way we're doing this, and we're, staff is looking for direction, and we will implement whatever program is the desire of the city council.
Any discussion, thoughts, direction?
Only thing that I want to see is, like I said, I want this whole opt-out thing to go away. We have a lot of landowners in this town who are pretty much, they opt out, that way they don't inspect their buildings, they don't fix anything, people call, I mean, my wife's a leasing agent, she can damn near give you a list of names of the people who come to them, and they say, they don't fix anything, I called them, I fix it with my own money, they don't give me anything back. Those kind of landowners, we don't want owning property in Fergus. I figure by doing this, there's got to be a way to reward the landowners that do follow the rules, just a little violation here and there, and then, so it's not going to be such a burden on them, but we need to go after the ones that are not following the rules, the ones that are basically taking anybody and everybody in and then just letting the properties go to heck. And then, problem is, I'm hoping, in the long run, what this does is makes it where the people who are just buying these properties and not doing anything are going to finally say, okay, it's not worth doing business in Fergus Falls anymore, I'm going to get out, and maybe some of these single-family homes are going to start opening up and not getting snatched up by every unwelcome landowner that we don't want here renting them out, and maybe they'll start getting into the single-family market, and then we're going to maybe get some, you know, tax revenue, but the point is, is there's a lot of people like me that won't pay the money that they want for some of these homes. They want something that they can move in at a decent price, and then that's going to hopefully get some more families into this town who can afford to buy homes.
Yeah, thanks, Brent. I wonder if it would be worthwhile to see a, you know, how many years has it been, four years, three?
Four years since we implemented the...
I think it's four.
Four years since we implemented the...
Policy that Brent's referring to, the opt-out, where the inspection, there's an inspection process that takes place, the landlord has the ability, the property owner has the ability to opt out and pay a higher rate, and indeed, right, correct?
No, not necessarily. I think we have to be careful, it's not, it's not an opt-out, we have two different programs. One of them is the standard program, one of them's the best practice program. If you go into the best practice program, you are voluntarily allowing us to inspect the unit, and as a result, you pay a lower fee. If you decide to enroll in the standard program, then you pay a higher fee and would then bypass the inspection. It's not an opt-out, so to speak, we have to be careful not to use that language, but it's, there's two different programs, and there's benefits, there's financial benefits to enroll into the best practices program, which has the inspection piece related to it.
Well, right, but for all intents and purposes, you are opting out of an inspection.
We have to make a distinction. We've been in litigation over the matter, and it's not an opt-out, it's two separate programs, we have to make that distinction.
The only thing that we have to keep in mind is, when we started the program four years ago, I think it was the city of Red Wing had just resolved the case, I think the Minnesota appellate court ruled in their favor, it had to do with mandatory inspection programs, and that's why we went with a voluntary inspection program, and then since then, I think the Minnesota Supreme Court just ruled on a case with the city of Golden Valley, it was in the city's favor, I'd have to look at it a little bit closer, but that was, again, over a mandatory inspection program, so, you know, we can look, I can talk with Rolf and Andrew and Guy, but we can talk about it a little bit more, but I think that's one thing that we have to consider, is the more stringent and the more this becomes mandatory, the more legal issues that we're going to have to have, not to say that we can't go there, but I think we just, would be in our best interest just to maybe review some of those legal cases and make sure that we're on solid ground.
No, I think that's actually an excellent idea, maybe between the four of you, to just bring to the council, in the last four years, here's the legal landscape around this issue that was, you know, and how it's changed since the, we last, because it is, as we all recognize, it's a item that's going to have a lot of people very, very passionate on particular sides of this issue, so maybe having good, solid legal grounds would be the first step to, in that conversation.
I think also, one of the issues is kind of part education of the tenants, I think there's kind of a pocket of tenants that, that kind of live in an income bracket that, you know, they, they don't qualify for sort of, you know, Section 8 housing, which gets inspection on a regular basis, and they can't afford perhaps a nicer property, and so, you know, they're kind of living in this band where they fall into some of these properties, you know, that Councilmember Thompson's, you know, talking about, and I think somehow we have to also get to educate them that they do have rights, and, you know, if, you know, they can come to the city and say, you know, we want, we want our property to be inspected because, you know, we've got electrical wiring hanging out, or, you know, the plumbing isn't fixed, but I know that, you know, it's a, it's a fine line, because they don't want to do that, because they fear the repercussions of that, so I think, you know, there's some education perhaps we also need to do as well, that, you know, people have rights, and, you know, they don't necessarily always exercise them because of fear of retribution.
I'll just bring up one other point, it really doesn't affect our agency probably as much as the building department, but in talking with landlords over the years, one of the questions has come up with a building maintenance code, or an ordinance that applies not only to rental properties, but does it apply to owner-occupied homes, and is that something that the council is willing to look at, that everybody is judged on the same basis on an even playing field, or, and I do think that you do have the right to hold rental properties to a different standard because of the fact that they are business, but that's something that's been discussed for the last four years as well, as do you incorporate some type of building maintenance code into the ordinance?
Sure. So, I guess the first step is we'll let staff do some of the research and at least begin the discussion, is that fair enough? Any other thoughts, concerns, questions? Scott?
I'd like, I think what Kyle was saying, it brings to light the side of this where we can actually have some effect, and it's in the ordinance. If the ordinance says this, and then we can enforce it by ordinance, then that's the safest route for us to go. To have an opinion about whether a property is, you know, better or worse than another, you can't have an ordinance about an opinion, and I think that once you start talking about a property owner's right to do what they want with their own property, it's a little difficult to just start telling people what to do with their property, whether they're a rental owner or a homeowner, so I think that we need to be careful to stick to what we can enforce by ordinance.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Moving on, one last item on the agenda, and that is a jurisdictional road swap with the county, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uwe.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Good morning again. This is a new business item, it's in regards to jurisdictional swap between the city of Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County. Just yesterday, the Otter Tail County Highway Engineer presented a proposed jurisdictional swap route exchange to the county Public Works Committee. In general, like I said, this exchange has been discussed since 2012. It consists of exchanging designated city municipal state aid streets with county-designated county state aid highway routes. The specific routes that we're in regard, we're talking about are from Otter Tail County, what they're looking to swap to the city, Cassaw 1, which is Alcott Avenue from Tower, generally, Tower Road to Union Avenue, Cassaw 25, Cascade Street, and that extends from Trunk Highway 210 to Vernon Avenue, and then Cassaw 1, once again, this segment of Freiburg Avenue from Vernon Avenue to Fur Avenue. On the, what the city of Fergus Falls is looking to exchange to the county, municipal state aid Route 125, Tower Road, extension from Alcott Avenue to Fur Avenue, municipal state aid Route 104, from Deerfield Drive to Union Avenue, and municipal state aid Route 137, Fur Avenue, extending from Union to Freiburg Avenue. To begin this process, the city council and the county board will have to prepare the necessary resolutions by midnat. This is, these resolutions are officially the moralizing, revoking, and reallocating these above-reference streets, there's going to be a little concert with the county and the city to get this accomplished, however, I think it's pretty, should be pretty seamless. Once these resolutions are set to the state, and we receive, to receive final approval from a commission order, that will officially approve this action. So, at this time, just introducing this, but I'm requesting consent to initiate this jurisdictional route exchange with Otter Tail County and the Highway Department there.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, Brent?
Just real quick question, this Alcott Avenue, that's the one the county has right now.
Correct.
And we'd be getting that, correct?
Under six, correct.
Would we get everything involved with that? Because I know there's been a lot of issues as far as that 45 mile an hour speed limit right there. Would we now be able to lower that? Because there's been a lot of people who want that the same all the way through, and once you come off that roundabout, you're doing 15 miles an hour anyway, so it's not like you're slamming on your brakes. There's been a lot of concern about the speed on that, and if we have control over that, are we going to be able to get the speed changed on that if we choose to?
That's, yes, Councilmember...
He's shaking his head, yes.
That has been, and that's came up, that's something that's not where, you know, I prefer we address that at, once a jurisdiction change is done, that is effectively some of the flexibility that this creates for the local agency, locally in the city. For instance, when it comes to speed routes and everything, historically, county has to adhere to speed studies, 85th percentile, that generate a lot of discussion. They're required to follow those speed studies. Now, it's a city and everything, we need to confirm this, but being if it's a locally-held street like that, the city council via ordinance can do speed reductions if that is the desired request.
Well, I'm just saying, as far as I'm concerned, that would be an added incentive for me to want to say, yeah, let's go ahead and do this, because that's been an issue that's been brought up quite a few times, and that would give us, hopefully, the opportunity to do it.
Any other questions?
I've got one.
Yes, Scott?
There've been conversations about roundabouts along this route, particularly at Fur and Freiburg, and then also up at Union and Fur, and I wonder if there weren't also questions about at Tower and Fur, and at Tower and College Way, and how are those involved in what might happen here?
Those currently, yes, we do have an agreement between the city and the county, we're doing a study in regards to Tower, to these roundabouts, one being a reference, Fur, Freiburg, Union, and Fur, and the third one being Tower Road and Fur Avenue right now. We're in the preliminary design phases of those. Western, I, if, doing, roundabout study is not currently under consideration for Tower Road and Western, however, not saying it couldn't be added, but want to stress, we have three roundabouts right now that we're studying, we can certainly add upon request, but basically, those, those cost shares are divided up somewhat equally between what branches are in within what jurisdiction. If it's a three-legged roundabout, four-legged, that's how the current arrangement is, however, let me stress, the current arrangement that we have with the county and our cost share is in consideration of this jurisdictional swap already, as presented right now, that this had already occurred.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a motion to bring this recommendation to the full council?
I'm making a motion. I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent, thank you. Anthony, further discussion? If not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Do you not believe there's any other items to come before the committee this morning? So, with that, we will adjourn.